This special works up in to order on 27. I can have a motion on the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Francis, thank you, Nikki. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. The first study item is high school athletics. Dr. Hall and team.
Thank you very much. So everyone, we've shared quite a bit of information with you since the last time we talked about this and wanted to revisit for a vote. And part of the communication that was sent to you was also being really clear what we were asking for in terms of a motion. We are here to answer any additional questions. We have Amber Jordan to join us. I would really love to hear her voice since she's the leadership around this, kind of where we are right now with all the other school districts and where we stand with our decision making. So Katie, whichever one you would prefer, would you like to do questions or have?
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, obviously, as we start to move forward into the semester here and navigating this COVID reality, I think as we make any decision about variations from our initial decision to begin the year virtually, I just really want to make sure we're crystal clear. I think the staff, admin team, and everybody else appreciate, you know, the clarity as well. So this evening, obviously, there is a couple of things to consider. Specifically, the status of cross-country for this, this fall season. The possibility of conditioning activities for students who would typically be playing fall sports, but will not be playing fall sports. And then that recommendation that fall sports actually be moved to an alternate spring playing schedule. And so, you know, those are kind of all interrelated decision items, but they're all separate decision items that we need to make. And, you know, obviously, we have a lot of information. And so just wanting to provide some opportunity for any clarifications that need to get made and then to be able to, you know, clarify our, just going forward with a board vote. So I'll pause there. All right. Go ahead, go ahead, Francis.
Yeah, so there was a lot of information there. So I just, I would like to hear from maybe, if possible, either administration or Amber or Jordan on, with all of the guidelines in place for all of what Katie just kind of laid out from an athletic standpoint, how confident and comfortable are our, our district employees in carrying out successfully sort of implementing the guidelines and as safely and as efficiently as they can? And are they, do they fully understand? And, you know, is there any other gray area that we should be aware of?
I'll let Amber on.
Yeah, I would like to hear from Amber, me and the athletic director and working directly with the coaches right now and then follow up with Roxanna if possible from an HR perspective. So Amber, can you please fill us in on directly what's been going on with the coaches?
Sure. And I can, I'm going to focus mainly on cross-country right now. Coach Spinks and Coach Razuko had continued their running club the entire summer with all the restrictions put in place. And anytime there was more restrictions put in place, they went ahead and adjusted their schedule for that and adjusted their protocol. They had nothing but positive things to say about how the kids dealt with those restrictions of wearing masks, social distancing, joining. They had different timeframes that they had kids meet because when we went down to 10 people meeting only, and that was like 10, including the coach, they had to make adjustments for that and the kids just went with that seamlessly. So they were very impressed with how the kids handled themselves during the situation. And the coaches thought that with the guidelines that were in place, they were very manageable with where we are right now.
Thank you, Amber. And then Roxanna, do you have anything to add from?
I just wanted to add and a couple of things. And then Amber, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But the last that I heard, just so the board is aware, we're asking, they're asking for permission to practice for cross-country in the hopes that the county will release the restriction on meets. Right now, there is still a restriction on meets. So they're hoping to get a season in. But if the county would not lift the restriction on a gathering in a park, then, then there wouldn't necessarily be competition. So we're asking for permission to practice in the hopes that as conditions improve, that will be allowable. So I do want you to know that we're not talking about doing anything that's outside of what's allowable based on county guidance. And in fact, our practice restrictions have been more strict than, than the county is requiring. So what Amber just described is what we would intend to continue with. And the employees have received instruction and will continue to do so. She's been communicating very clearly with them. Because it is a choice activity, parents and students have been asked to sign waivers. And so all of those precautions that we've been asked to take, both by the county and by legal, have, have been handled when we were doing the summer running. So I think that they have a track record of handling that successfully in the summer. And I have no doubt that the, the coaches will do everything in their power to make sure that those restrictions are followed. Amber, did you have anything to add?
Just an update from, I had a Misha meeting today and they are supposed to come out by tomorrow with further guidelines. I know we're not talking about the spring alternative right now, but they've never come out with all the guidelines yet for that. So they are hoping to get that out to us tomorrow. So we should have clarity tomorrow on what that spring would even look like.
Yeah, we are asking you to go ahead and vote on that because Amber has to give them a decision about what we intend to do by September 11th, which would be prior to your next board meeting.
Just in reviewing the list of, you know, risk, medium risk, higher risk sports, as, as I think it's Misha, may interpret them that way. Are we not running golf anymore? I know that that was a very.
Golf is in the spring.
Okay.
Not even an issue right now.
That's why I wasn't seeing it. Gotcha.
No, it's in the spring.
Fair enough. Thanks.
How many students do we anticipate participating?
I think for cross-country, there, he gauged about 20 to 25 students. So we would probably split those into two groups and each coach would take a separate stable group at this time under the guidelines and just to keep tracing records pretty clear.
I know that we're only talking about, as Roxanna just said, we're only discussing getting on a training schedule for the student athletes. But what I'm wondering is, I don't, I've not been to a cross-country event. Is it, is it a bunch start? Is it a staggered start? How do they go about starting the events?
Well, can I clarify something with that? What we have are two separate things for motions. What she's saying is correct in terms of competitions officially starting because the county has said, you know, it's not safe at this point in time. But what your motion is saying is that for fall, if all is going well, then they can compete. I just want that to be clear because that's what you're saying. Regardless of what's going on, they can compete this fall. Not as a, as a condition to what's going on. Like, we are going to always follow what St. Louis County is telling us. And we're never, because we, everyone has to follow those guidelines. But I just want you to know that that's what the motion is saying, that they're allowed to compete. And then there's a motion for training because we want to make sure those that participate in the alternative fall season have an opportunity based on all of our guidance. And we're practicing layers of protection, that they're prepared for these alternative sports in that timeframe, second semester. So that's why it's, it's a separate motion. I just want to make sure that's clear on, on what we're asking of you all.
So Wes, to answer, to answer your question, when they have a cross, cross-country meet, there is a starting area and the guidance that they have arranged and why they're considering at low risk is folks have to wear masks until three minutes before the race starts. They'll have somebody that take the mask and then the start will happen shortly thereafter. And after that start, kids separate pretty quickly. So the idea is that they would not be close together unmasked for more than essentially a few minutes.
And I don't think with talking with other ADs who run the actual meets, some of the bigger meets that you would see hundreds of participants in probably won't be the case this fall. They're looking at having more smaller meets with just a few schools at. And again, if the guidelines just open up and, you know, the area opens up, that may change. But right now, as ADs are planning the meets, they're looking at smaller meets.
Hey, Amber.
Yes.
So I'm glad you brought that up because my question is also about how many schools, I guess it would be in our conference, I guess, have either opted out or are participating, however you want to try to answer that question.
All of those, yeah, all of the schools for cross-country in our conference are opting to run the season or try to run the season. The other sports, however, except for one of the conference schools have opted to do the alternative spring schedule or alternative fall schedule, sorry. But for cross-country, it was under the impression that all of the schools in our conference were going to try to run this fall.
Thank you.
Question. So we talked about kind of the guidelines that we're following for keeping our students safe. But how do we make sure that those are the same that are being followed at the meets? I'm assuming we're not in control of, of kind of how they're distancing, et cetera, at the meets. Is that right?
I guess, Randy, the guidance there is the coaches and the ADs would have their own areas and be responsible for our athletes. It would be up to the officials to make sure that the guidance was followed in terms of running the meet itself. And if at any point a coach felt that a meet was being running unsafely, they would have the ability to pull their athletes if they needed to do so. Amber, would you like to add anything to that?
No, and that's something that we talked about in our mission meeting today also was having clear communications between the athletic directors and the coaches way prior to any competition so that we are all aware of, yes, masks need to be worn or you're going to warm up in this area. So all that would be figured out prior to the meet. And so at any time that we felt uncomfortable, we could pull out and not attend something that we didn't feel was safe for our students.
Great. Can we then, if there's other questions about cross-country, that's fine. But I would like to kind of dig in a little bit more onto the conditioning and weight training piece as well. And just, you know, I, I feel like I have a, a good sense that with cross-country, that is nearly 100 outside small groups able to be distanced, you know, so those sorts of precautions are very clear in the handbook of, of guidelines that have been presented. I do feel like I need more about the precautions that would be in place for conditioning and weight training in order to get a sense of if we feel that is a, a risk that is, is being sufficiently mitigated.
Right. Go ahead, Karen.
No, no, I was just going to tee that up for you, but you go ahead, Amber.
Coach Spinks also did weight training over the summer. We limited due to the space of our weight room down to six students in there at a time. And he had the same results that they had with the running club where the students maintained social distance. And we're very good about cleaning up their area as they move from station to station. We had them spread out as much as they could in the weight room and also utilize as much of the outdoor space as we could. But we kept those groups very small.
And did you have a schedule? How did you manage the number of kids?
Yes, anyone that wanted to weight train, Coach Spinks had them rotate in stable groups and groups of six throughout the summer.
So is the proposal here that only students that would be planning to participate in the alternate fall are involved, could partake of conditioning and weight training? Or is this any high school student is the, I'm not, what, what group of kids is being offered this opportunity?
And Roxanna or Karen, you can step over me on this. But because it would be the coaches that would be coaching those fall alternative kids, it'd probably stay within those groups of kids that know that they want to play, want to volleyball, soccer, or softball for that fall alternative.
Same idea, sorry, Roxanna. Same idea as Coach Spinks. You know, you have your different groups because like volleyball is big. So they would have to be split up and it would have to be a schedule. And there's protocols and how you engage in that space. And what I mean by protocols, of course, you know, there's social distancing, but they're also cleaning the equipment, which is huge. Roxanna, what you want to add?
I just started to say typically in high school sports, it, it's very common for coaches to, to put out feelers to see who might want to play and then have an open gym or a conditioning session for students that intend on playing. Those, those students tend to be a very stable group of students. Occasionally, you'll get a student who might be a freshman, for example, that want to try for the first time or maybe switching sports. But it, it, it doesn't vary widely in terms of the number of kids usually. They're usually fairly stable, known groups and cohorts of kids that are working with their coaches.
And I just wanted to make sure this point was clear that we are asking also for quote unquote, open gyms. We're not asking to use the gym space. We're asking to use outside facilities for those three sports. So for example, volleyball would do outside work with soccer and softball, not asking to use that inside space, except for the weight room, which would be very controlled groups.
Great, thank you. Other questions, concerns? All right, well, we've got a couple of other things on the study items list. If folks are okay moving.
I'm sorry, I'm a little behind here. My internet's lagging. But just so I understand, one more thing with the high school athletics. When we're talking about moving the fall sports to the spring schedule, then spring would be to more of a late spring, early summer schedule, correct?
Correct.
And then Amber, is that what is, are most of the, I guess, the conference still taking that course? Or is, I think you said maybe there was one that might be, can you remind that again?
There's one of our conference schools that are trying, they're practicing currently and they're trying to have a fall season with the anticipation that they probably will not have a fall season and then will opt to move to the spring also. So yes, at least five of us are asking to move to that fall alternative season, which would then push the spring to the spring alternative. It's a little complicated. Like I said, Misha hasn't sent out all the guidelines yet. We could opt to run a traditional spring schedule for baseball, girls soccer, and track and field alongside having that fall alternative schedule going with volleyball, boys soccer, and softball. However, with talking to the coaches, we don't know if we could run side-by-side sports and still have enough students to maintain all of those teams.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thanks, Amber. Appreciate it.
I have a question on the fall alternative, alternative idea. Is the alternative, is, is the plan for the alternative to change from fall to spring? Or is the plan to attempt fall and then have spring as an alternative if it doesn't work out? I'm not clear on that.
The fall alternative would be moving all of our fall sports to that March to May timeframe.
With the exception of cross-country.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
They wouldn't have a chance to compete if they were to move to alternative fall. This is their only time to compete.
For cross-country?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, yes, right.
Well, at least with the other sports, we would at least have our conference games. So we are guaranteed at least 10 games with our conference schools.
And, and the ability to compete for cross-country relies upon our county lifting their restrictions, right? Okay.
Correct. Yes. They're planning forward.
Great. Okay. So for, last call for high school questions at this point. You could ask questions during action items too, if you need to. All right, thank you, Amber. Appreciate you joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Hall, the COVID tracking system.
Yes, stimulating, my favorite thing right now. So I am fortunate to sit on two committees, two groups. One is the one that I sit in regularly with the regional superintendents and I'm in a subgroup with the health professionals, which I had an opportunity to be a part of on Thursdays. So what I want to give you right now briefly is an update on both those two groups. And then as listed here, the text that's in the body of the agenda is the, the thinking and the development of a protocol for us, how to engage with the data. And then all the attachments is from our meeting that we had last week. Just a refresh and also for US, I told everybody I was bummed out because I was really excited. I had metrics and I think about you every time we talk about. So my feelings were hurt, man, you weren't here. But anyway, it's there for a refresh. So my updates, I have learned with the information that was presented to you and which is attached to the agenda from EdPlus. This is important because things are changing. And Matt Goodman is the representative. Actually, he's a Pattonville employee now and he's been putting this together, doing a lot of research and looking at best practices, really leaning heavily originally on Minnesota's work, the state of Minnesota, the work that they're doing. So we've gotten to the point where that data that we are, are tracking can be submitted to that regional group three times a week. It's Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays that he's updating. And again, this is old stuff. I'm not, I haven't shared this because this isn't the purpose right now to, to go over that. But I wanted you all to know that that's how it's being disseminated. So that leads me to kind of that first bullet there, thinking about when we want to have that conversation. I know we were kind of brainstorming the idea how we would review it and what day. So I wanted you all to know that piece. And then the second update that I have is that I learned today, and it really was not a deliberate moment, it was kind of said offhandedly. But St. Louis County apparently is going to work on a dashboard for the schools. So apparently, St. Louis County got themselves together and they created a dashboard and specifically had information for school districts. So the pressure is on. And actually, I think that the tipping point was Matt. He's showing everybody up right now because it's really stellar work that he put together. So the acting director of St. Louis Health Department, Spring Schmidt, she was not present. She's on vacation. So there was someone in her place and he, he set it off, you know, handily and, and we didn't really get to know great detail and we had to ask follow-up questions because it kind of causes us to pause and think about what we're doing right now with EdPlus. He also wanted to add that it is extremely challenging to pull this together. And St. Charles had, you know, they concurred, their work was enormous and a lot of people worked on it. So I just want you all to know that what we have right now is not bad. It's not wrong. It's good. But it is, I believe, things are going to shift in terms of what's going to be made available for us from these two meetings. So the next step is Matt is going to sit in with the health professionals, specifically here in St. Louis County, to start working on a dashboard for something that we should have had four months ago. Anyway, that, that is forthcoming. So I do want you to know things may change a little bit in what we're going to be reviewing. But it still leads us to the process and the work on how we are to review and really get clear, like on the second one. You know, discussion around what is our desired threshold? What is safe for MRH when we think about transitioning to a different tier? And then lastly, this one here is, it's going to take, as I mentioned last week, a lot of planning and work around the transition. And that is internal stuff that we're going to be doing and presenting to you, just similar to what we're doing right now. We're going to have to do some really concentrated work together in terms of, of making that happen. We'll be very transparent and a lot, I mean, may even have some policy change. I don't know because we've never done this before. But I just wanted to give you all a heads up that that is going to be heavy lifting for us to make that move. And also in thinking about discussion and determination in, in what's safe thresholds for MRH, I also need for you all to think about our preschool. And looking at the data and looking at the, like, the cohort age group data and what it's saying. And again, that's information that's going to be forthcoming, apparently. The, the health department says they'll start to share that because it does show that, you know, the, it's, the transmission rate is not the same for younger children as it is for older. And I know that school districts are really thinking about the discussion, you know, around transitioning back to a different tier when they're going to have blended. And some are thinking about starting with the younger students as a slow return. So I just, those are the things I think, you know, as a board, we need to start thinking about as we start to look at this information and what that entails and decisions you're just going to, you know, make and how we're going to work together, providing you all the information that you need in order to, to do all that. So for today, I was just hoping so we could get rolling, like, we got to start at some point. I have updated information now. I think I got something yesterday for what's going on in, in the region. So how would you all like to proceed? Just up for kind of brainstorming is how you would like to review? Just up for kind of brainstorming is how you would like to review.
Karen, do you know when the county is going to come out with their dashboard?
Oh gosh, no. No, they did not give us a timeline. They just said it's going to be extremely difficult and challenging for them to do it and that they say we deserve this, we need this, and they're going to put forth the effort. And now that this other part of St. Louis, St. Louis County or St. Charles, since they've done it, they're like, we need to do this too, but they did not commit. And the person who's in charge of it was not there. So more to come. I'm thinking maybe at the next meeting or the week after that, when she returns from vacation, we can get more detail about that.
But the dashboard would include essentially the data points that Matt has already, that have already been identified, I would assume.
Yeah, essentially, yes, correct. It would be expanded with zip code information and then the age groups, the cohort information. It's difficult with St. Louis County with the zip codes as they correlate with school districts. Because like we have in Richmond Heights for school districts. So they were saying it's tricky because the boundaries aren't clear. But we can still give you zip code, they said. We will give you zip code information. You all just kind of have to figure that out by looking at the zip codes.
Okay, yeah. So I mean, I think we threw out at the board meeting, the idea just, yeah, putting a standing 15 or 30 minutes on the calendar. I mean, it sounds like Karen, maybe Fridays would work based on just the march of information that you're going to be getting on this behalf. I don't know, probably no perfect time for these meetings to happen, but if somebody wants to throw out a particular time and see if it corresponds with Karen's availability, I think we should just book it. And if folks can make it, they can make it. And if not, they can't. What do your Fridays typically look like, Karen?
Friday mornings would be good. You know, we could have a standing invite, you know, Kat and I can work on that, send that out. She'll take care of all the, you know, technical pieces around that. And you check in if you can. And I'll have it there as shared document so everyone could see it and we can go from there.
Karen.
Friday mornings work for me.
I'm sorry, Maria, what was that?
It said Friday mornings work for me. Any morning is much better than an afternoon for me after day long Zoom.
Yes, thank you.
The afternoon is best for me. The morning I'm in Zooms, so.
Every morning I have a 10 o'clock meeting, but either side of 10 o'clock, I can be available. Between, say 10 and 10:30, I'm blocked.
Karen, I have a question about some information you were giving us regarding the preschool. So when you are envisioning being in tier two and moving into that, can you just tell us what is in your mind? Are you looking at it like it would go in steps? It would start with preschool and then it would go from there? Or are you looking at it like if we are in tier two, everyone is going to be in that tier? It's not going to be staged?
Right. So some of the innovative thinking right now is I would like to call a soft launch, a slow launch, where it would be your younger students and we can determine the cutoff. Some do pre K through eight, some through pre K through five. Just looking at the numbers in the data, people are tracking that and seeing that the transmission rate is so low, lower than it is for your adolescents, that that was the way that they would go in terms of transitioning into tier two. And of course, you know, we need to go back because it's been a minute and review what we have for tier two for our learning plan and our layers of protection because we did tweak some things after we got feedback from everyone. And just so folks have a good feel for this. And to just step away from that, there has to be a lot of communication to everyone. It wouldn't just happen automatically. That's what I'm saying. It's a heavy lift and communication is huge. Communication is huge and working with the staff. And we are clear about all the work that we've put together for guidance, but now we need to, you know, be even more intentional about the work with students. I do have to say, and this is some, seems to be a general sentiment with the superintendents that have started school already, some with teachers only, some that are starting with 100% virtual. But once the teachers have been in the space and they start to get familiar with the space and with each other and practicing layers of protection and doing the social distancing. I mean, the comfort level is growing because they're becoming more acclimated in this new environment, which I think is a way to go versus everybody being in there together after they've been away. I think a full return is probably the best way to go because human behavior is critical in all of this to ensure that the layers of protection actually happen. We have to train our behaviors, the adults do, and then they need to be there to help the students so they can follow suit. So to go back to what you said before you were asking, Nikki, is, you know, that's one thing that we need to review as a group, you know, so you can see the trends. Because I'm just talking casually. I don't have the numbers in front of you. But some of the practices right now is there's discussion of starting with younger students to come back in a blended environment first. Because it's showing that the transmission rate is much lower than what it is for the older students. So that's just some thinking right now and discussion around the region with some other school districts.
And Karen, when you're talking with other superintendents, I mean, you know, start that, what's your comfort? We talked, our last meeting, we were looking at the dashboard and we had the colors, red, yellow and green. What's your comfort for those different parts or colors?
You know, that is a really good question because I don't feel good with anything, honestly. But I do know that this is where we are right now and I'm really concerned about our students being on a virtual environment for a long period of time. I'm very concerned about that. And the learning gaps, I believe, are going to grow. I think our social emotional gaps are going to be exorbitant over a long period of time. I think it's going to cause a lot of harm. But I do, I think about the safety and I know that it's critically important to do whatever we can to ensure what we need to do to keep young people and staff safe in the building. And more and more each day, I feel confident about what we've done and our research and our planning in order to do that. But it takes practice and we have to have buy in and we have to ensure that we're doing those things in order to keep everyone safe. I go to, you know, what Jenny is doing right now. Forty percent of their students are back. They've been back since, what, July? Because they had summer school. And, you know, they've been tenacious. They've really practiced and been intentional about all of these things that I was saying about layers of protection and in order to be safe. So, you know, there's more details behind that contact tracing. You got to make sure you have enough people there. You know, it isn't just bring everybody back. You really have to be deliberate about all of it. And I feel confident that we can do that. I think as a staff, we're capable. But I just, at the end of the day, I'm really worried about students being home for a long period of time. I truly am.
I, well, I guess I'll be so bold as to speak for the board. I think we're all concerned about that. So you're not alone in that.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, it's.
So this conversation has led me to a couple of questions. I'm glad we had, we're talking along these lines. To you, Karen, what do you consider to be, what, question one, what do you consider to be a long period of time? And question two was, when you mentioned the contact tracing element, how are we going to be confident, when can we be confident that the county can support contact tracing?
So.
Do we know when that might happen?
No. So how long, you know what? I, that is a very good question. I think it's been too long right now, honestly. And again, I'm with everyone. I want students to be safe, like in terms of a virus and transmission. Please, I know that's real, but I do also feel that it's been too long. We lost all of that time in fourth quarter, then we've had summer. I know we're never together, but it just has been compounded by the fact that they were away that time period in fourth quarter. So I, it makes me sick to my stomach, if I'm be completely honest with you, thinking about all this time the kids have been away and away from their school. And MRH is exceptional in the things that we do. You all know that. We will do whatever we can because first and foremost, we want to make sure that, you know, it's safe to be back, but, you know, and I'm conflicted, right, Wes? It's really a difficult situation. And what I said the first thing to your comment, I felt triggered because you said, well, when do you think the county will give you what you need? I have no idea.
I will.
That is part of my frustration in terms of having conversations weekly. And Katie, you've been in them. They, in some of them, because they sometimes contradict each other in different parts of the region. There's St. Louis County, Jefferson County and St. Charles and St. Louis City. And they do that. And then there's some medical doctors, MDs. So it's been challenging and with the superintendents in that space, we've tried to be very clear and concise and consistent about what we need. And it's taken until we've had a concrete example coming out of Ed Plus, developed by Matt Goodman, for them to really start to wrap their head around what we need. And I feel we're so behind because there have been other states that have been mandated by governors and such to have dashboards. And I feel that educators who aren't the professionals in that field, we're trying to put this together. And so it's difficult to, you know, I mean, we're trying as best as we can. So we have what we need in order to make these decisions because we know we want to do what's best for kids and families. But it's just, it's been challenging. I feel like we're starting to make some movement with them because of the very reason why I told you a moment ago. Roxana, what were you going to say?
I was just going to say, the new reports that we're putting out, which you can glit by clicking on the county health department, have been very helpful. And they have divided the county now into regions. So we get count, we get central regions specifically. And so the last two weeks have been very hopeful, Wes, because it's the first time we've been in the green in most categories, which is great. That's a trend line we want to see. They do have a new development line on there specific to contact tracing, but it says under development. So I feel like when we can see those metrics as well, that'll be a huge step in the right direction. We've not had that information before. On site, what I really wanted to add, onsite, again, I know I've told you this before, but all of the nurses and all of the buildings have gone through very significant John Hopkins, John Hopkins contact tracing. So we know what to do onsite. I have also had that information so that when I work with the staff. So we feel very well prepared onsite. It really is, I think, to your point, we need those county metrics, but it looks like they're under development.
Yeah. And now Desi, because I'm on the commissioner's advisory council and I sat on that today too. And now Desi is trying, and I don't think this, I don't know if it's going to happen or not, but they're talking about quarantine issues and how frequently and where they are happening in schools. So there was an animated conversation around that with different superintendents around the state with the commissioner. So I think Desi's now trying to step up and provide some, some information as well. Wes, did you have a follow up question?
Well, I just wanted to, I wanted to flesh out some, I wanted to have flesh out some ideas on the whole contact tracing thing because it's integral to our plan.
Yes, you are correct.
And it feels to me like maybe it's coming together now, but it was definitely not together in the past. So if it is coming together, this is encouraging.
Yeah. And one thing that, you know, I want us to consider is that we have additional people that have been trained. I know it's extensive. It's like about six hours. But moving forward, we just want to make sure, this is some of the feedback that I've gotten from folks that have students is that it helps to have more than three, like what we have. I think moving forward, we need to look into that as well, is that we have more on that team that have been trained.
Great. So we'll look for the invitation to start reviewing dashboard information. I guess probably not tomorrow, but a week from Friday going forward. Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
And then Roxana, the academic calendar update.
Right. We are asking for a simple change that is completely tier related. We realized as we were planning this week that the principal representative to the calendar committee had moved. And so we missed a little blip. We know that when we're in tier two and tier three, the synchronous learning days will be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. But our current academic calendar has our early releases on Tuesdays. So the principals are requesting that anytime we are in a tier two or a tier three, that the early release date be moved to Wednesday, which would not disrupt the synchronous student learning days. And it would be a much easier shift. Looking at our immediate future, the two closest days are September and October. So assuming that we are in a tier two or a tier three in September and October, we would just propose shifting that day from the Tuesday to the very next day, the Wednesday. And then we don't have another early release again, I don't believe, until December. So we would have a minute to take a peek. If we were still in a tier two or a tier three in December, we would move it to the Wednesday. But otherwise, we do need it to be on a Tuesday to accommodate our block schedule at the middle and high school. So hopefully that's clear, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
When is the end of semester?
When is the end of the semester?
I'm sorry, the end of the quarter. Yeah.
The quarter.
Yeah.
I don't have a calendar in front of me, Ed.
Looks like Ed's looking, yeah.
Yeah. I think it's in October, but.
October 30th.
October 30th. Okay, great. Thanks. Any other questions there about calendar? All right. We can move into action items then. A motion on cross country's fall season?
I'll make a motion to move to allow the high school cross-country team to compete in the 2020, 2021 fall sports season as presented.
Francis, thank you, Ralph. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Motion on conditioning and weight training?
I move to allow high school students to participate in conditioning and weight training during the normal 2021, 20, 2020 and 2021 fall sports season, beginning August 24th, 2020, as presented.
Thank you, Francis. Thank you, Ralph. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Thank you, Nikki. Any abstentions? Motion passes. A motion on the alternate fall and spring seasons?
I'll move to allow high school students to participate in the 2020, 2021 fall alternate and spring alternate competition seasons, beginning March 12th, 2021, and May 14th, 2021, respectively, as presented.
A second.
Thank you, Francis. Thank you, Brandy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Academic calendar motion?
I move to allow early release to be moved to Wednesday in any week that MRH is operating in a Tier Three distance learning or a Tier Two blended learning setting in order to maximize direct student contact time.
A second.
Thank you, Francis. Thank you, Brandy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. A motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Francis. Thank you, Brandy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all this evening. See you soon.
Have a good weekend.
Thank you, everyone.
Everyone.
Have a good weekend.